Pursuant to Section 841411 of Nebraska statutes, notice this meeting was given August 30th, 2024. The meeting will convene at 6:00 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the requests to be heard forms must be submitted to the Board Secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at the meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the Board President. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion. School District 0001, and the Board of Education Service, Unit Number 19, will be held Monday, September 16th, 2024 at 6:00 PM in the Teaching and Learning Center at the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Coming Street. Please visit our website, www OPS.org. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of Superintendent of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Teaching and Learning Center on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the presentation of the colors and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Northwest High School's JROTC.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you. Mr. Smith, if you could please lead us in the OPS vision and mission statement?
The vision: Every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission: To prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Dr. McFarlane, a roll call, please.
Crackey?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Tealyn?
Here.
Cassidy?
Here.
Erdnberger?
Here.
Foul?
Here.
Head?
Present.
Holman?
Present.
Juarez?
Present.
Nine present.
All right. Next up on the agenda, we have school spotlight. Principal Mylon with Bancroft Elementary.
President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the Board, and Superintendent Ray. I am David Mylon, principal at Bancroft Elementary. We are honored to learn that our students read over 354,693 minutes in the OPS Summer Reading Challenge. I'd like to thank the district for providing the motivation and challenge, and our students' focused on literacy and reading and the love of learning as an excellent foundation for the moonshot, all students reading at grade level by 2030. I brought with me, because I know you didn't want to listen to me, so I brought with me four students from Bancroft Elementary to tell you a little bit about their experience with reading. So at this time, I'd like to have Jaylen, Talia, Elijah, and Giovanni come on up. And I didn't need to use the stand, but I think they might want to. If you would just, Talia, you want to stop up here, and then maybe just say your name and your, a book that you read this summer. Let me slide this over.
My name is Talia, and a book I read over the summer is Scotts.
My name is Elijah, and one of the books I read this year was Rambo's State.
My name is Giovanni, and one of the books I read this summer was Diary of a Worm.
My name is Jaylen, and this book I read this summer was Diary of a Worm.
Thank you. And if you have questions for them, that was the purpose for tonight, was so that you have any questions that you had of them.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for being here. Congratulations again on your recognition. Congratulations, kids, on all that reading. That is amazing. And we'll open it up to colleagues for questions, starting down here. Ms. Juarez?
Um, usually I can read it everywhere, but it depends on how much noise is going on.
I like it when it's quiet.
I appreciate it when it's quiet.
I prefer when it's quiet.
Ms. Erdnberger?
I just had a quick question. That is, what grade are these kids in?
I am in third grade.
I am in third grade.
I'm in fourth grade.
I'm in fourth grade.
Well, good job, kids. I can see you're going to be readers for life, and that's very important.
Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Mr. Head. If I can, can I just have you come around just a little bit so I can see all of you? So, you all told us one of the books you read this summer, but I'm kind of wondering how many books you read this summer. Can you kind of, maybe like, tell me if you kind of have an idea, more than, more than one? More than three? More than five? More than seven? Wow. Okay, so you guys are really, you really read a lot this summer, right? So when do you get all that reading done? When do you do that? Is that something you do in the mornings, before school, or after school? When, can you, each one of you maybe tell us a little bit about like, when you, when you like to get that reading in?
Um, I usually do reading, um, before bed.
I usually do reading after school.
I usually do reading after school.
That's great. Everybody clearly did a lot of reading. You're doing a great job. Keep up the good work.
Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you, President Head. Well, thank you Bancroft for being here tonight with us. You're the bright spot of our meeting, so thanks for coming. Okay, so I have to hear it one more time. Give us, Principal Mylon, give us the minutes again. I have to hear it. It was three hundred and fifty-
Three hundred and fifty-six thousand, or three hundred, sorry. Better read the numbers. Three hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-three minutes.
Wow. I think we should give him another round of applause, just for that number. That's awesome. Okay, so this was the Summer Reading Challenge. So I don't know if any of you maybe curled up by the pool and read a good book by the pool while you sunbathed, but tell us, I know Ms. Juarez asked, um, if you like it quiet, or you like it, you can read with a little bit of noise, but I want to know where your favorite spot to read is. Do you have a favorite place?
In my parents' bed.
In my bed?
Usually in my living room.
My living room.
Excellent. Well, thank you all again. Congratulations. And I have to say, I'm going to try to find the Diary of a Worm. I think I might have to read that book. That's pretty, that one sounds like a pretty good one. So anyway, thank you, guys. Congratulations. Keep up the good work and keep reading all school year long. Thanks so much.
Dr. Holman? Oh, sorry. I thought you had something. All right, well, oh, Ms. Crackey.
I just want to thank you for coming, and we really liked seeing you, even if we can't see you too well behind there. But you all look so good, and I'm glad you had some parents with you today, too. I enjoyed hearing that. I wondered if, if any of you agreed and had the same favorite book that you read. Do you even remember what was your favorite? Nobody remembers their favorite book? You do. Okay, what was it?
Sisters.
Sisters?
Sisters.
Okay. Do you still let him come to your office, like you've done before? That's always fun at his school. So I've seen him before with all the wagons, but he doesn't have any wagons down there. I saw, was it Broncos? Broncos? Are we going to have to change? Oh, okay. That's good. Thank you for coming. It's good to see you. Bye.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, congratulations again, everyone. We couldn't be prouder of your accomplishments and to welcome you here to the meeting tonight. I know we got to talk a little bit before the hearing, so I'm not going to ask you to stand up at the podium again and answer more questions. I'm sure you've got other places you'd rather be on a Thursday evening, but thank you again for being here with us. Thank you for being students of ours. We greatly appreciate all you do. Wish you all the best this school year. And if you wouldn't mind just coming by, I would like to give you a high five, fist bump, handshake, and then take a quick picture. So thank you.
Thank you for coming. It's so nice to meet you.
Yeah, I'm glad you came. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
And yeah, I'm always glad to see you. You know that.
So I wanted to know, do you have those bank accounts in adult size?
You have a good principal here.
Is that your boy? Your score?
Moving.
It's a different place every time.
Oh, are you doing? Hmm? Good, thanks.
Who's wife?
His wife.
Very sad.
He was James' boss. He didn't take you too long. Pretty good. I says it didn't take you long to realize. I wasn't going to say anything. Yeah, long it should take.
All right. Next item on the agenda, we have Board and Superintendent Communications Treasurer's Report. Mr. Ray?
Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the Board, and Superintendent Ray. The financial reports for the month ended July 31st, 2024 have been prepared and submitted for your review. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Board comments. Let's go ahead and start at the left on this one.
Thank you, President Head. I just quickly want to give a shout out to all of our cross-country runners. I was, this is not good. Okay. One moment, please. Oh, it might be fixed now. Does that sound better? All right, great. So yesterday, I was able to attend the very first cross-country meet for our middle schoolers over at Buffett. It was an invitational. And so, so proud of all the, of all the young ladies and men who participated. It was 93 degrees yesterday, so it was so hot, just sweltering. And to see these kids, I believe they run about three miles or so up and down hills and around where you can't even see them anymore. Just really, really tremendous strength and motivation, and just so very proud of them all. So if you all get a chance, even if you don't have cross-country runners, to get out to go see these young adults out there running and doing their best, it would be greatly appreciated. They're very, very fast. I mean, they get finished so quickly. The girls usually run first, starts at 3:30. The boys start right after that, and you're in and out by like 4:00, 4:15. So, great event to go watch.
Thank you. Moving on, Ms. Cassidy, Ms. Foul, Mr. Tealyn, you have anything? All right. Ms. Erdnberger, I know you're going to have something.
Thank you, President Head. A couple items that are on the consent agenda. Well, items I-11 through I-16 all have to do with the renovation and improvement of our Burke High School track, and it will be, I'm assured it will be done in time for the state track meet. And I just also wanted to note, if you read the rationales for it, you will be able to tell that almost half of the cost is being covered by foundations, the Omaha School Foundation and the Burke High Foundation, I believe. And so that's just a really good example of public and private partnership. And we will have a state-of-the-art track to welcome all the athletes from across the state next May. The other item I wanted to point out was, and we discussed this a little bit during the budget hearing, and that is item I-30, which is where we always list what the staff adjustments are. And I did want to, if anybody cares, draw your attention to the chart at the top of the attachment, which now includes a column that, since we've started a new year, it includes a column. So we now have the employee count from last year and the end account, the start, I'm sorry, it was the start of last year and then the start of this year. So we can compare how we are doing. And as noted in the budget hearing we had earlier, we have 171 more teachers this year than we did last year. So a huge shout out to the past and present chiefs of HR for accomplishing that. A lot of us are hearing a lot of polls these days with the margin, plus or minus margin of error. I have talked to two of our 3,500 teachers, so I'm not sure what the margin of error on that is, but both of them said that this has been a really great start to the year. And as we already knew from last year, the change we made in the salary structure and the payments and the fact that we're now absorbing that salary into our budget and not just paying it out of ESAR funds is very much appreciated by the teachers. So again, huge margin of error, I'm sure, but two out of 3,562 of our teachers think everything is going great. I know Ms. Juarez wants to share with you some information off of a sheet we got that's called Points of Pride, so I only will make one point, and that is, our communications chief tells me that he thinks this is the first year in the history of OPS that our report to the community is also in Spanish. So for people to whom that's relevant, you should know that we're making that effort. And this information is available on the website under About Us Reports. So if anybody wants to look at some of this, and I think Ms. Juarez wants to share some of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to just make a couple comments on our Points of Pride sheet that we received tonight. I'm very excited to see these statistics, and I'm going to definitely proclaim them more on social media this, tomorrow, after we get done with this meeting, because I'm just so proud of these results and want to share them with the community. One of them that I wanted to mention was about how our OPS students earned more than 13,000 college credits while in high school during the '22-'23 school year. And I just think that that is really, really amazing. And I just, I wish I would have had that opportunity when I was going to school, but I'm glad that our students do now. And I'm just so proud of all of the different opportunities that are given to our students and that it's providing positive results for them for their future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juarez. Ms. Crackey?
And further looking at the Point of Pride, it talked about bachelor's degree 28.7, bachelor's and 18 hours, 8.49, master's, 46.32, master's and 30, 15, 40, 15 and 48% and doctorate, 1%, evidently. I, I had a very, very good time this week. I went to my schools. I have eight schools. And I love visiting schools. That's the most fun of being on the board. Then you get to see what's happening, and I learn so many things when I go to the schools. I, today even, I was at Jocelyn, and they have those mats that I understand all teachers have, but I don't always see them. And so in the younger children's rooms, I got to walk on the mat, and it does kind of wishy and squishy underneath it. It seemed like fun. And for children who need some time away or relax or something, go walk on the mat. And I loved it when I went to Catlin, and they had all their programs like this printed out. And so they gave me a copy, and that makes it a lot easier for me to take care of and know what's going on. And at Crestage, I got this kind of a calendar, which I loved. Today, when I was at Edison, I got something that they're doing with the new math program, and guess what? I don't think I could teach it. It was so hard. That was in third grade, and I couldn't even figure out what they were doing, even though I was a good math teacher, but it was way over my head. Because they're doing it very unusually. And then I got the calendar. I love getting a calendar from them. And it told me at Jocelyn, I had all kinds of things about the calendar and what they're going to do on, on their different programs. And I like that. And some of the websites weren't ready yet and didn't have different things like the PTA, PTO meetings. So I was invited to one, and I did go, and it was at 5:15. And I had no idea it was at 5:15. How would I know that? I always went to PTO meetings at 6:00 or 6:30. But they're trying to do some of these earlier so that they catch people on the way home, and they don't have to return. They also can point in, and they can do it online with them and give their comments. So they're trying to do everything they can so that we get our parents in the schools or getting a voice in the schools. And I just really love to visit the schools. That is a lot more fun than sitting here and going through the board things, really. Not that I, I love the people in the tack building, but I like being in schools more. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Crackey. Mr. Smith?
I just wanted to say thank you to all of our educators, para's, security staff, parents, SROs, our transportation people, our nurses, our school social workers who help keep our kids safe on, and in multiple capacities. Things have gone on across the nation where it's really eye-opening and-
called Points of Pride, so I only will make one point, and that is, our communications chief tells me that he thinks this is the first year in the history of OPS that our report to the community is also in Spanish. So for people to whom that's relevant, you should know that we're making that effort. And this information is available on the website under About Us Reports. So if anybody wants to look at some of this, and I think Ms. Juarez wants to share some of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to just make a couple comments on our Points of Pride sheet that we received tonight. I'm very excited to see these statistics and I'm going to definitely proclaim them more on social media this, tomorrow, after we get done with this meeting, because I'm just so proud of these results and want to share them with the community. One of them that I wanted to mention was about how our OPS students earned more than 13,000 college credits while in high school during the '22, '23 school year. And I just think that that is really, really amazing. And I just, I wish I would have had that opportunity when I was going to school, but I'm glad that our students do now. And I'm just so proud of all of the different opportunities that are given to our students and that it's providing positive results for them for their future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juarez. Ms. Crackey?
And further looking at the Point of Pride, it talks about bachelor's degree 28.7, bachelor's and 18 hours, 8.49, master's 46.32, master's and 30, 15, 40, 15 and 48% and doctorate 1%, one person evidently. I, I had a very, very good time this week. I went to my schools. I have eight schools. And I love visiting schools. That's the most fun of being on the board. Then you get to see what's happening and I learn so many things when I go to the schools. Today even, I was at Jocelyn and they have those mats that I understand all teachers have, but I don't always see them. And so in the younger children's rooms, I got to walk on the mat and it does kind of wishy and squishy underneath it. It seemed like fun. And for children who need some time away or relax or something, go walk on the mat. And I loved it when I went to Catlin and they had all their programs like this printed out. And so they gave me a copy and that makes it a lot easier for me to take care of and know what's going on. And at Crestage, I got this kind of a calendar, which I loved. Today, when I was at Edison, I got something that they're doing with the new math program and guess what? I don't think I could teach it. It was so hard. That was in third grade and I couldn't even figure out what they were doing, even though I was a good math teacher, but it was way over my head. Because they're doing it very unusually. And then I got the calendar. I love getting a calendar from them. And it told me at Jocelyn, I, I had all kinds of things about the calendar and what they're gonna do on, on their different programs. And I like that. And some of the websites weren't ready yet and didn't have different things like the PTA, PTO meetings. So I was invited to one and I did go and it was at 5:15. And I had no idea it was at 5:15. How would I know that? I always went to PTO meetings at 6:00 or 6:30, but they're trying to do some of these earlier so that they catch people on the way home and they don't have to return. They also can point in and they can do it online with them and give their comments. So they're trying to do everything they can so that we get our parents in the schools or getting a voice in the schools. And I just really love to visit the schools. That is a lot more fun than sitting here and going through the board things, really. Not that I, I love the people in the tack building, but I like being in schools more. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Crackey. Mr. Smith?
I just wanted to say thank you to all of our educators, paras, security staff, parents, SROs, our transportation people, our nurses, our school social workers who help keep our kids safe on, and in multiple capacities. Things have gone on across the nation where it's really eye-opening and to lose students, to lose parents, to lose teachers is one thing that's really tough to deal with. And so one of those things I just want to say publicly is thank you to all of you who help keep our district safe.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment and recognition. We have two speakers who have submitted a request to speak forms tonight and the board has adopted policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Dr. McFarland will let you know when you have one minute and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you're in need of an interpreter, please let Dr. McFarland know and one will be provided for you. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about. We ask that you request the opinions of all who speak and refrain from applause or other outbursts during presentations. If the subject of your comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not identify the student or staff member and instead provide that information to Dr. McFarland. She will assist us into looking into those specifics for you. If you've not gotten an opportunity to speak and would like to submit written commentary, please provide to Dr. McFarland. She will make sure each member of the board gets a copy. As a reminder, Nebraska revised statute 841412 requires that any member of the public desiring to address the board identify yourself, including an address and the name of any organization you may represent, unless the requirement is waived for security reasons. And we don't have a request for a waiver this evening. So again, before you start your public comment, please state and spell your first and last name and state your current address. Let us know if you're here representing a particular organization as well. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have materials to distribute, let Dr. McFarland know and she will get them from you. It is now 6:27 PM and our first speaker is Myra Hudson.
Good evening to all of you. I am Myra Hudson, M-Y-R-A-H-U-D-S-O-N. My address is 2872 Laurel Avenue. If anybody knows where that is, I am just two, three blocks from Miller Park Elementary, where I'm a longtime teacher, good evening to all of you. Just for the record, this is one of my least favorite things to do. I don't like speaking to adults. Give me kids any day and I can handle that. I was at the Baxter Arena for our back-to-school with Dr. Ray and everybody else, and he talks about moonshot. Is that right? Yes. Listen, I love teaching. My siblings, I and I are all OPS graduates. I went through Miller Park myself, so did my siblings, to Macmillan, then we split at North and Northwest. I know, I've been teaching at Miller Park all my teaching career and it'd be 23 years, I do believe, in January. You guys calculated a little different, but I did a half a year. I need my half a year there. And, but this year is extremely hard. I'm at 31 students. 31. 31 fifth graders. 31. Something has to change. I'm not asking a world of difference. If you want me to do what you're asking us to do, I do what I need to do. I'm gonna do it because our children's futures are at stake. I need to do it. But what I'm dealing with now is something I have not, I have not been trained on. I cannot, and I don't know how, to deal with the mental health of at least three of my students. And yes, as a mandatory reporter, I have reported some of those things. I have. But yes, they're still children in my classroom, there's three of them. That is, I cannot reach. I'm trying my best. I am trying my best. Last year I did a combo class of fourth and fifth grade student. That was not even close to being as hard as this fifth grade class I have now. I have had students in the past that came from some horrendous homes, but their safety place was at the school. This is something different here. I'm asking the board, I'm asking all of you, I'm asking everybody that is listening. I need something. I need some kind of support. I don't know what to do. If it's something that you guys recommend me that I'd take a class on mental health of children, I would do that. But I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do. And you can get one or two kids that can disturb a class, disturb a class, and then it assists the whole class off. Granted, the advantage I have in this class is that the fourth graders I had last year, they loop with me. They know my expectation. They know what they're supposed to do. They come in, they do it, they do what they're supposed to do. My new fifth graders that did not have me, they're getting there, but you can get one or two, and it's three of them. One is extremely, one is very extreme. In a classroom where I can just be talking and it's just something she don't want to do, we're gonna roll off some MFs. We're gonna roll off the B words. We're gonna call some children all their names, even myself. Now, I'm a grown woman. I can handle those things, but we're not saying that in my classroom. That interrupts their learning. I'm asking the board, I'm asking Dr. Ray, I'm asking all of you, all the adult people in charge. I'm not asking you, oh, Myra, Myra, what should we do? I don't know. I'm gonna give 110%. I'm gonna give to these kids. I hear from my parents all the time, it's not me, it is not me. I have one that got her PhD. She was rolled with her doctor's degree with her white coat on Friday. I can make impact, but I need help from you. My principal is doing all he can. He is. I don't have a para. I don't. I do have some newcomers in my classroom. One came brand new, can't speak any English, but I'm doing my best.
One minute.
Please, please. I love teaching. I don't want to leave teaching. I'm not saying my principal, he is doing what he can, but he's rolling over the building because we have students and especially on our floor, the intermediate floor, that is, it's a family of them. It's a family. I thank you for listening to my concerns. Again, I, I'm going to hit what you asked us to do, Dr. Ray. I'm going to do what I need to do.
30 seconds.
And if you want to know my record, go back and look at my math score from my fifth grade, oh, from my fifth grade NCAT score last year. We can get, I can get them, I need something else. We need another teacher is what we need. Thank you for your time and I appreciate all of you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Justin Riddle.
I have to record this so people at home can see what I'm gonna show, because tonight's the best night I've had probably in, oh, I'm Justin Riddle. 16422 Patrick, have you guys ready for this one? So.
Spell your name as well, please. Thank you.
Pass. What? Spell my name, Justin, J-U-S-T-I-N-R-I-B-D-L-E. Got it?
Thank you.
So I want you guys to understand what caused me to be me. Seven years ago, a bank lied. And I'm showing it to the people at home, because you can't see it there, but they changed a form on this document right here, saying that I owe child support, which was, my kids lived with me, so there was no possibility, but they lied, they changed this form, and as a result, I had, I had lost a house loan. And for seven years, I've been attacked online as a deadbeat. And I'm telling you, it's not true. And guess what? I want everybody to understand that if I say something false right now, I'm gonna get sued, because right now I'm calling out you guys, the Nebraska Attorney General and the Eighth Circuit and the courts. And I'm gonna show you why. So this document that shows very clearly it was doctored, went in front of the courts and the Eighth Circuit. They both said it was fine. People said it was true. The school district then lied to the Attorney General. The Attorney General, folks at home, then lied. And in fact, they lied by telling the truth here and then lying right here. It's hilariously awesome. But I filed a lawsuit and the biggest error that's ever happened, and I cannot believe everybody fell for it, and I think you guys probably all slept well for the last week, but I'm gonna let you in on a little secret. The Eighth Circuit dismissed my case, so that's twice. The Eighth Circuit has had documents in their hands that are forgeries. This isn't subjective. I will get sued if I'm lying, right? The Eighth Circuit of Appeals, the second highest court. Now, I did win in the Nebraska Supreme Court because I was telling the truth, right? Now, you guys got this dismissed, but guess what everybody didn't realize? It was dismissed without prejudice. Do you know what that means? It means when I file for a full, you know what it means. It means when I file for a full panel review and I put these two documents in front of them and I say, hey, in 2019, I vowed I would get justice. And I sat here and I waited for years. Now in 2024, you guys gave me the opportunity to come back and slap every single one of you liars right in the face with the Eighth Circuit and the Attorney General. And here's how. If they don't accept the facts, I'm just gonna refile. Then if the lower court doesn't accept the facts, it'll go back to the Eighth Circuit. But here's the beauty. Since everybody online found out about what I was doing, this would be 48 hours, 8,500 views. You guys are all involved in these views. This says I got 21,000 more views in the last seven days than normal. Do you know why? Because I never get views. Do you know why I am now? It's skyrocketing because people realized that you guys lied. The Attorney, they're nodding up there, folks. I don't know if anybody here still thinks I'm the crazy one, but here's where it gets even better. Shame on some of you. My mom was banned from the Attorney General for asking them to fix this lie about her that you all signed off on. My mother, a 70-year-old woman who spent 36 years in this district. And guess what, folks? It's all on YouTube, which you can tell, because I'm getting lots of views, because people are like, oh, my God.
One minute.
The Nebraska Attorney General trespassed this guy and his mom because they have the proof? They escorted us out armed? Multiple Capitol security? I'm sorry, folks. Nobody in Nebraska has supported me and I kept thinking it was a futile battle, but I kept fighting it because it was the right thing to do for everybody. Because people like Carlos Deluna, who got hit to death because people like you that lie, can't fight for themselves.
30 seconds.
Now we've got an army. Hopefully somebody in this room and somebody watching this tonight resonates that I've been honest all the time. McFarland's leaving. I'd leave too. This is gonna be fun, folks. Nobody in the history of the country has done what I did to the Eighth Circuit by taking their entire decision and rendering it mute. You have to appreciate it. It's the game. And you guys are, you made your choice.
Time.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. At this time, any member of the board may request that an item on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Mr. Teal has already requested that we pull item I-32, which is the second reading of several policies, so we'll consider that after the budget action items. Do we have any other motions to pull items off the consent agenda? All right, seeing none. Do we have any abstentions?
President Head?
Yep.
Tracy Cassidy and I will be abstaining from item I-19, Claims C, for her role in the Omaha Schools Foundation, and then my role with Council of Great City Schools for membership for our dues.
All right. Thank you. And do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda that's before us, minus item I-32? So moved. All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, was that Ms. Cassidy? All right. So I would remind the board that we're voting on the consent agenda, minus item I-32, subject to Dr. Holman and Ms. Cassidy's abstentions from Claim Report C. Any other abstentions? All right, seeing none. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Full.
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving to information items. Item J-1A, update to policy 6211 and 8273. Mr. Teal?
Thank you, Mr. Head. This is also my policy committee update. Oh, no, we got several one. Okay, great. 6211. So 6211 is curriculum and assessments. There are some technical corrections and kind of alignment to current practice and language in the update. There's also, we also removed some language that really was not really at the policy level. It was a little bit on the micromanagement level and really more for the administration to, to take care of. So we kind of aligned it to our, our policy philosophy of staying at the policy level. We also have 8273 removals and vacancies. This is, you might remember, is the second time we've seen this. When we went through the 8000s, we also saw this then. And really what we're doing now is a correction. There's, the statutes on these are a little bit circuitous and we looked at it again and with the interpretation that we have now, we're making some corrections to align it to statute. I'll take any questions on those. We'll have those on first reading at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Teal. Any questions, colleagues? All right, seeing none. Moving on to item J-1B, the policy committee update.
Thank you again, Mr. Head. Policy committee update. We met on August 29th. In attendance, myself, Ms. Erdnberger, Ms. Juarez, and Mr. Head. Continued to review 6000s and, yep, reviewed, continued to review the 6000s and will continue to bring those forward as they're ready. The reason that I pulled the item off of the consent agenda is there is one policy there that as we've had discussions, we think there might be further room for improvement or expansion. So I'll expand on that a little bit more when we get there, but that's where we're at with policy committee.
All right. Any questions, colleagues? Ms. Full?
Yeah, I just have a point of clarification. So we pulled I-32 off the agenda. Are we gonna be voting on it again right now?
So it'll be, so we'll move it to, it'll be item J-2H. So it'll be the last action item. Any other questions, colleagues? All right, seeing none. Moving to item J-1C, the legislative committee update. Ms. Erdnberger?
Thank you, President Head. Just to bring everybody up to speed on what did and didn't happen at the legislative special session. First of all, major props to everybody on board, on staff and our lobbyist firm for all of the work that they had to do, reading bills as they were being generated literally overnight for consideration the following day, and understanding what was, what the impact on our school district might be and being in a position to help inform state senators about that impact and help them evaluate the legislation that they were being asked to consider. The important thing is, is that the LB1 budget proposal, which would have had a significant impact on public school funding by limiting what amounts they could spend, did not pass. Instead, what they passed was, the intent, of course, was property tax relief. And they did come up with a property tax relief package, but it does not involve any more or less funding as far as public schools are concerned. It does limit the municipal and county governor, government, it does apply, I'm sorry, municipal and county government revenue caps with some exceptions, but those caps only apply to municipal and county governments. And trust me, they are working on what that, what that means to them. So it, all things considered, it did not do any lasting damage to the public schools across the state of Nebraska. And in some respects, gave state senators an opportunity to seriously consider the impact of the proposals that are made to them and how that will impact school districts large and small. As, even as we speak, members of the legislative committee and Superintendent Ray and others, Megan and members of our lobbyist firms, we have Megan, and members of our lobbyist firms, we have scheduled one-on-one meetings with our state senator candidates that are in the OPS district. And we're meeting with them and just making sure that they understand what we are facing and that assure them that if there's any information they need in connection with their decision-making, we are standing by and ready to assist them with that. So I believe that that's going to be taking place for another, maybe three weeks here, meeting with those candidates. And then we'll be back in session and having weekly meetings again. Any questions? Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erdenberger. Any questions, colleagues? All right, seeing none. Moving to item J-1D, the Accountability Committee update. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. The Board Accountability Committee met on August 27th to review and finalize the timeline for the superintendent evaluation for the 2024-2025 school year. As we reported in our last meeting, the committee considered the Nebraska Council of School Administrators, which is also known as the NCSA Resource Guide for Superintendent Standards and the Evaluation Process. Three goals aligned to the standards, three goals to the standards were identified for inclusions in this year's superintendent evaluation process. August 20th through the 27th, Dr. Crowe and Dr. McFarland met with individual board members to gather their input on the three goals. Recommendations from the other board members were shared with the committee and helped guide the goals for the 2024-2025 school year. On the agenda tonight for adoption are the three goals, indicators, and a timeline for the evaluation. Goal one is the accountability goal, specifically, the superintendent promotes student success through a clearly defined process of accountability in the culture of continuous improvement. Goal number two is a collaborative goal for shared vision and strategic direction, specifically that the superintendent leads the development and implementation of a shared vision, strategic direction, and goals that reflect the district's core values, beliefs, and priorities. And goal three, selected by the superintendent, is regarding his leadership, conduct, and professional growth, specifically that the superintendent leads with enthusiasm, fairness, and integrity, demonstrates a high level of personal and professional conduct, participates in professional learning opportunities, and models continuous improvement. These goals will be shared consistently with the board members throughout the year. So as we are having our one-on-ones and things may arise, you can sit and talk and discuss some of those recommendations. And if anything needs to be revisited in regards to the three goals that the superintendent will be working on. Following adoption by the board, evidence will be gathered throughout the school year to assist us in completing Mr. Ray's evaluation. As indicated on the timeline, evidence will be shared with board members by the end of May. We will complete the evaluation by June 9th. Board members will share their, board members will share the evaluation with the superintendent by June 13th. And at the June 16th board meeting, it will be affirmed on the board agenda that the evaluation process for the superintendent for 2024-2025 school year is complete. This concludes the Accountability Committee update.
Thank you. Any questions, colleagues? Ms. Erdenberger?
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, did I remember, did I, I think I forgot, does goal number three include the word enthusiasm?
It does. Enthusiasm, fairness, and integrity.
Okay. Just so you know how this works, the Accountability Committee met with every board member one-on-one where we were, I tried to identify what kind of criteria could be used to see if the superintendent had achieved the goals we're talking about. I forgot about the enthusiasm part, so I guess I would ask every member of the OPS staff that every time Matt approaches you and he appears to be enthusiastic, please let us know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Or not. Or not.
Any other questions, colleagues? Ms. Foal?
Thank you. The state statute says we have to evaluate our superintendent once a year? Okay. For some reason, I thought it was twice a year, so I was.
In.
Oh, I see. I see. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, colleagues? Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, President Head. So I'm just looking at the calendar. So the, the evidence will be released to board members on the 30th. And then it looks like we've got a little over one week to consider that and complete the evaluation. I remember last year, that was a pretty tight timeline. I'm just wondering if the schedule allows for any more time for that evaluation to be completed.
Not at this time. We want to kind of stay within that timeframe. And again, during the year, we should be doing constant evaluation, taking notes. And there are notes that are going to be available with the board officers that Dr. McFarland is preparing. So every update that Matt sends us, we can use those and put it together in our notes so it's not such a crunch in doing it in one week.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? All right, seeing none. We'll now move to action items. So item J-2A, the adoption of the proposed goal indicators and timeline for the evaluation of the superintendent. Mr. Smith?
I move to adopt the proposed goals and timeline for the evaluation of the superintendent.
All right. And that is a committee motion, so it doesn't require a second. Do we have any discussion, colleagues? All right, seeing none. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Foal.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Nineye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, we will be tabling item J-2B for the time being. Moving on to J-2C, approval of the 2024-2025 property tax request for education servicing at number 19. Mr. Ryan? Sorry, one second. Sorry, Mr. Ray, for comments first.
So before the presentation begins, I want to enthusiastically acknowledge all the work that goes into reaching this point. Just like we take our responsibility to students and families so seriously, we understand our responsibility to taxpayers. Staff work year-round to diligently prepare and manage our budget, and this year has other years we've kept the board informed as we work through it. We monitor conditions and forecast five years out. As we unite under a more closely around the common literacy goal, there will be a natural opportunity to review what is working and refocus what is needed. We appreciate the board's consideration and support. And as Mr. Ryan indicated earlier in the hearing, thank you to Shane Ryan for his leadership, Kristi Murkowski, and the entire budget team for this year-round effort. Mr. Ryan talked in the hearing about our investments in people, though I would argue that the four kids that presented in the school spotlight are the number-one asset in our school district. Retaining and recruiting high-quality staff and how this budget accomplishes that while delivering a lower levy for the community we serve. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Mr. Ryan?
The brief summary of the highlights of the proposed budget. 100% of the general fund budget increase is going to staff salaries and benefits, which has had an immediate and direct impact on our ongoing staff recruitment and retention efforts. We understand that we are still not staffed at pre-pandemic levels, but being able to add 171 new teachers for the school year that has just started is a very big step in the right direction. The proposed budget results in a 10.9 cent decrease in the combined levy for Omaha Public Schools and Educational Service Unit number 19. This significant levy reduction will provide true property tax relief to the patrons of the district with an $8 million decrease in the combined property tax request for 24-25 for the four levy funds for the district and for the Educational Service Unit number 19. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions any of the board members may have at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Do we have any questions on, in order to stay on topic, let's just go ahead and take these as they are on the agenda. So any questions on specifically the approval of the 2024-2025 property tax request for ESU 19? All right, seeing none. Mr. Smith for a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution before you to set the 2024-2025 ESU number 19 property tax request in the amount of $5,166,618.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holman. Any discussion? Seeing none. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Eightye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item J-2D, approval of the 2024-2025 General Fund of Douglas County School District, 0001. Mr. Smith for a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution before you to approve a 2024-2025 General Fund, Local Operating Fund budget in the amount of $812 million, supported by tax requirements of $310,445,596, plus reimbursable programs in the amount of $150 million for a total general fund budget of $962 million.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tealyn with the second. Any discussion, questions on the general fund budget for the district? Ms. Erdenberger?
Thank you. I, I'm looking at page five of your presentation. I think it's relevant to this. Just to reinforce how much I appreciate how much work going into this and the kind of budget-cutting I went into putting this together, I just would like to point out, or confirm for me, if you will, that the equipment and other costs, the, is a reduced amount representing a 46% reduction, right?
That is correct, Ms. Erdenberger. The significant areas that were reduced in the budget for the upcoming year to make those reductions were in the district contingency budget line item and also the amounts budgeted for year-end inter-fund transfers. So recognizing that the cost for salaries and benefits was going up significantly, we identified areas where we could make reductions that would not impact school buildings or significant efforts moving forward, and reducing the contingency because we have additional staff starting out the school year, and also eliminating the inter-fund transfers, looking towards budget favorability at the end of the school year to make those transferred seemed to be the prudent way forward.
I think that is kind, you anticipated my next comment, which is noting that salaries and benefits have an increase of $86 million, and at the same time noting on the same page there that personnel costs represent almost 81% of our budget. And I don't ever run into anybody that says we're paying our teachers too much. So recognizing that 82% of our budget is staff and all staff, and there's just not a lot of room for adjustment. If we want to, as we do, to continue to put salaries where we attract and retain staff at all levels, and knowing that it represents 82% of our budget, not a lot of room for cuts in the remaining 20%. So again, I really appreciate that you guys were able to look at this with a clear eye and, and everybody, the board and superintendent included, who made the sort of shift of our resources towards staff. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on the general fund? All right. To Ms. Erdenberger's point, I guess I wasn't going to say anything, but I wanted to add on to that real quick. So looking specifically at the staff salaries, that's something that we took extremely seriously as a board as well. And it's not, you know, just numbers that we kind of threw out there willy-nilly saying, hey, everybody gets a raise. It was very strategic investments in, in staff, specifically looking at special education staff, knowing that we were, you know, significantly short-staffed in that area, and looking at kind of where some of our peer districts are across the country and how we can get up to, get up on par with some of our, our peer school districts. You know, another, another big portion of it was specifically those mid-range, you know, five, six-year-plus teachers with master's degrees. You know, looking at, looking at data of teachers who had been leaving us, where they were going, where in the pay scale they were at, where in their careers they were at. That was one thing that the district very, you know, smartly identified was, you know, we were losing those folks to surrounding school districts specifically because they paid more. And so we made the decision as a board and as a district to adjust the pay scale to, to help, you know, retain those folks, but also to be able to recruit people specifically in those pay scales from, from our surrounding districts so they can stop poaching from us. So these were, you know, very targeted, very meaningful investments in our staff. I think every member of our board is proud of the work that we've done investing in our staff, happy to, happy to do it. And, yeah, I just wanted to add that on to, to Ms. Erdenberger's comments. So with that, do we have any other? Yeah, Ms. Erdenberger?
I don't know if this is the time to talk about the long-range forecast or not, or does that fall into one of those other categories?
I think that falls under general fund. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll go ahead. It's slide 11. And again, really appreciate the work that goes into the long-range forecast. It's one thing to be able to say, what are we going to do next year? But it's a whole other thing to say, what are we doing through 2029? And to give us a chance to anticipate some of the things that are going to happen. Specifically, as we are moving forward, and I know that you guys are tightening belts as best you can, I would note that the ARC, which is the Oster's contribution basically, is going to move from around 30,000 to 47 million, we wish, right? And I really appreciate that you anticipate that. You know that's probably where we're going, and so we can make other adjustments as needed to anticipate having sufficient funds to make what is the actuarial required contribution to our OPS pension plan. I did have a question when you were making this, and plus noting that down at the bottom, the unassigned fund balance, which we like to have between 10 and 20%, by 2029, we anticipate it will be at 1.5%.
So I would, I would say that we.
But assuming we'll do something.
I would say that's based on current assumptions. And those assumptions are intentionally very conservative. Less increases in revenue and greater increases than perhaps on average on the expense side. And it also does factor in the recruiting of more teachers onto the payroll. So there is some number of new staff in the teaching ranks anticipated in those assumptions as we move forward. We really look at the five-year forecast as a long-term barometer, trying to identify, is there something that we need to do moving forward? You'll, you may recall that prior budget presentations, we even dipped into the red in some of the long-term forecasts. These are highly subject to change based on, based on economic circumstances, legislative circumstances, and just the real-life experiences of our staff. So we are extremely hopeful that the salary adjustments passed by the board will help retain teachers, reduce retirement rates, and will attract new teachers. That is the best problem that we can have as a HR and general finance divisions. And it adds some emphasis. and it adds some emphasis for us to really look at the efforts that we've been doing over many years and making sure they align with how we're moving forward as a district in the changing technology and curriculums that we have.
No, I really appreciate it, and I hope that you can appreciate how hard it is for me to say that I'm glad you're being conservative. Not usually my strong suit. Last but not least, do the, does the long-range forecast anticipate further 4% overrides by the board? Or is this within the cap that's been imposed by state statute? Or is that not even reflected one way or the other?
So we do have the 4% override on the agenda this evening that's baked into the '24-25 assumptions. I believe the following year in 2025 does have that in there as well, but that is an area where some additional revenue may be available that's not considered in the long-term forecast.
Okay, thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Mr. Teelen?
Thank you, Mr. Head. So part of the funding for this year's budget is coming from the reserve, but I think I heard you say, I'm just confirming that we still are budgeting and planning for the reserve to be near 20% at the end of the year.
That is correct. At the end of the '24-25 school year, we should remain at or around the 20% reserve level, and then in subsequent years, absent any changes or adjustments, it may start declining.
Great. And then, as Ms. Erdenberger pointed out, the equipment and other costs, and you pointed out that those were coming mostly from inter-fund transfers and... I'm sorry, what was the other? I can't read my handwriting.
District contingencies.
Contingencies, right. So when you say inter-fund transfers, I'm assuming that's to the non-levable funds, is that...
Correct.
So I guess part of my question is, we are maintaining our reserves for this year. We're looking at reserves maybe starting to move down in future years, but this is also reflects that we are starting to kind of move away from funding some of those areas that give us the ability to pull those funds when we need them later. Is that accurate?
That will be harder for us to do in the future, yes, if these assumptions are accurate.
Okay. And so those, and maybe, I don't know if you've got this off the top of your head, it's not a question I asked before, but I'm curious. The funding that we're going to have to those non-levable funds now, how does that match how much we plan to take out of those funds over the next couple of years?
So we have been fortunate in that we've been able to build up the depreciation fund, which will be a primary source of funding for new buses, for the district-owned fleet, new curriculum as we continue to maintain current curriculum, and also the new accounting and finance HR system that we will be implementing because the current system will be sunsetting in the near future. There is a significant reserve built up in that over the past few years that will help that for the short-to-medium term, and then long-term, it will be a little bit more challenging.
Yeah, that's exactly what I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? Ms. Juarez?
I just have a question, trying to understand. I realize it is just a forecast, but why in '25 and '26 do we have the summer school budget amounts there going down? Are we anticipating that we're not going to be offering it at all levels, or what would be the explanation for that?
So the summer school budget is projected to be just slightly less in 2025. That's, I don't think that there's anything specific in that other than we did have some additional costs from the current summer school that were a little bit in excess. We will be reforecasting this as we get further into the year, and that, those costs may change. Again, when we look at the '25, '26, '27 amounts, those are somewhat subject to change, and I would say that the opportunity to maximize participation in summer school is something that we always attempt to do for our students. We do have the challenges of recruiting enough staff to operate summer school at the level desired. I know that there are some students who haven't necessarily been able to participate over the last couple of years because we didn't have the staff that signed up to do summer school. So while the budget in the forecast is a little bit lower, we do have sufficient funds budgeted to offer as much summer school as practical, and that is something that is generally recoverable through the state aid funding formula two years after we have the summer school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? All right, seeing none. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Crackkey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Teelen?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Eightye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving to item J2E, approval of Douglas County School District 0001, 2024-2025 budgets, which require levy excluding the general fund. Mr. Smith for a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution before you to approve the 2024-2025 Douglas County School District 0001 budgets, which require a tax levy, including a tax levy excluding the general fund, as follows. Bond fund in the amount of $53,900,000. Special building fund in the amount of $26,750,000. Qualified capital purpose undertaking fund in the amount of $5,345,000.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Teelen. Do we have any discussion on the budgets that require a levy excluding the general fund? Seeing none. Dr. McFarland, call the roll.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackkey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Teelen?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Eightye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving to J2F, approval of Douglas County School District 0001, 2024-2025 budgets, which do not require a tax levy. Mr. Smith for a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution before you to approve the 2024-2025 non-levy budgets for Douglas County School District 0001, which includes the following: school lunch in the amount of $51,613,000, $613,613,000. School activities in the amount of $6,500,000. Central stores in the amount of $4 million. Depreciation in the amount of $65 million. Employee benefits, $15,300,000. Student fees in the amount of $3,500,000. Contingency in the amount of $20,200,000. Cooperative in the amount of $4,500,000.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holman. Any discussion? Seeing none. Dr. McFarland, call the roll, please.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackkey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Teelen?
Aye.
Eightye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item J2G, approval of the 2024-2025 budget for ESU 19. Mr. Smith for a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution before you to approve the 2024-2025 ESU Number 19 budget of $29,600,000.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Crackkey. Any discussion on the ESU 19 budget for '24-25? Seeing none. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackkey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Teelen?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Eightye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, we have the new item J2H, which is the item I-32 that was pulled off the consent agenda. Approval of second reading of policy is 6230, 6240, and 6380. Mr. Teelen?
So this is a committee motion, and I think the procedure here will be, I'm going to suggest, or make a motion for an amendment to remove 6240 homework so that that can be subject to additional consideration by the committee. So I think where we're at is that we have a motion by the committee that does not require a second, and I am making a motion to amend to remove 6240.
All right, do we have any discussion on the motion as amended to approve second reading of policy 6230 and 6380? All right. Yep, let's get a second on the amendment.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All right, do we have any discussion on pulling out of policy 6240? All right, seeing none. Do we have to take a vote, or can we pass that just unanimous consent? Yeah, okay. All right, Dr. McFarland, please call a roll on the amendment to the motion then.
Smith?
Aye.
Teelen?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackkey?
Aye.
Eightye.
Motion carries, returning to the new committee motion, which is approving second reading of policy 6230 and 6380. Mr. Teelen, anything to add?
No, this is a second reading, so certainly welcome any further questions, but otherwise, I think this is ready for a vote.
All right, any questions, colleagues? Seeing none. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackkey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Teelen?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Eightye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, we have no receipt of reports on the agenda this evening, and also no closed session. So that concludes our meeting. Let her reflect the board meeting adjourned at 7:18 PM.